This is a regular select meeting. And this will be all-
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the special Board of Selectments meeting for February 15th. Can you hear me? Everybody hear me? How about now?
Yes!
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectments meeting for the 15th of February. As promised, we are going to have one thing on the agenda and one thing only. And that is a presentation by the University of Northeastern University on their expansion plan. I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I would also like to take this time to have a moment of silence for the victims in Parkland, Florida. It was a horrific thing to happen there, and our prayers and hopes are with them. So please take a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. So as we discussed, this is a presentation of Northeastern's expansion plans at the East Point in Nahant. First, I want to point out a few things. This board is responsible- I'll pull the microphone even closer. This board is responsible for the town's best interest in any matter that comes forward. I have briefly seen what Northeastern has for a possible plan. I have only seen- I've seen only one, some here have seen three or four. And my colleagues have seen none. You all must realize if the board went to any of these small meetings, it would have been an open-meeting violation. We couldn't do it unless it was posted. So because we're elected, we couldn't do that, all right? At the time, I saw the conceptual plan, I stated to the university's representatives that any plan must be and should be presented at a public meeting held by the Board of Selectmen so the entire town can see it. So that's why we call this meeting this evening. After the presentation by the university, the board will discuss questions we may have. And after that, we have discussed and talked through our questions. I'm going to open it up to the public, for public comment and questions. All participants should go through the chair, which is me. And I'm going to ask you to come to the microphone up here so everybody can hear and state your name and your address. That's pretty much it. I want to introduce first the Vice Chairman Taylor, Chesley Taylor, T. Taylor, we all call him. And Richie Lombard, the longest-serving selectman in the town of Nahant. Attorney Dan Srip, he's our attorney. And Jeff Shelgren, our town administrator. Up here is Stephen Smith, Jeff Crusell, John Tobin.
Bob Shaffner.
Bob, Bob, okay, Bob. I didn't hear the last name of him. Shaffner, okay, Bob Shaffner. We have some guests up front that want to speak. And everybody's going to get a chance to speak tonight. So I'm going to open it up for everybody. So without any further ado, I think it's appropriate to let Northeastern start with their presentation, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Town Council, Town Administrator Shelgren. For the record, my name is John Tobin, Vice President of City and Community Affairs at Northeastern University. We are happy to be here tonight to present our first formal presentation of our new building plan at our campus. And I'll be kind of introducing folks from my team to speak before we get to the Q and A to look at the plans. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce the Director and Chair of the Marine Science Center at Northeastern University here in Nahant, Jeff Trussell, sorry.
Thank you, John. Thank you all for coming. As you know, we are here to describe preliminary plans for new building that would support the educational and research activities of our Coastal Sustainability Institute. This institute will continue to address the many challenges facing coastal ecosystems and communities. However, over the past few weeks, it's become very clear to me that the Nahant community has significant concerns about our proposed plans at the Marine Science Center. My goal tonight is to continue to listening to these concerns so that we can better integrate them into our approach to many issues. I am hopeful that tonight's meeting will be one of many opportunities for the community to express their concerns and for us to respond to them. I would also like to emphasize that regardless of our proposed projects and their outcome, it has also become clear to me that we need to do a much better job communicating with the citizens of Nahant, and we need to work much, much harder on being a good neighbor. You have my promise that moving forward, we and I will work earnestly on these issues. Finally, I just wanted to update folks on the seawater intake project because that has been a source of significant concern in the community. We continue to work directly with permitting agencies on this issue. As I know, folks who are in the community have concerns with the projects they've also been doing. And the resubmission of a significantly arised ENF will likely happen no sooner than mid-March. We have heard the community's concerns about this project and are working hard to find solutions, including installing a lobster hatchery at the Marine Science Center to supplement the local population. When we are ready to resubmit the ENF, I will personally notify, you have my commitment on this, I will personally notify the town leadership. I will post on Town's Facebook page, as well as the Marine Science Center's Facebook page, as to when that ENF is going to be submitted. I will then also do the same when MEPA, the Mass Environmental Protection Agency, announces the day and time of their site visit for the revised ENF. So thank you very much for taking the time for us to be here. I am shocked and in some ways very sorry to cause such consternation in the community, but I'm hoping that this dialogue and others moving forward can help us find a good place for everyone involved. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Bob Shaffner, who will describe the plan.
Nahant is a unique town, and it is an extremely charming town. East Point is one of the most special places on Earth. Whatever happens on that site has to be wonderful. It has to be terrific. My name is Bob Shaffner. I'm an architect with the firm Payette. And we've been asked to help plan and design this facility as it moves forward. A little bit about me, I'm a Marblehead resident. And I deeply appreciate this environment. My family obviously comes out. Recreation is a major part of people's lives out here in Nahant for outsiders. But we revere this atmosphere. It's a wonderful, wonderful place. And I want you to know that everything we do is going to take that into account. I'm also a planning board member in Marblehead. And I am familiar with small towns on the coast, not quite as small as Nahant. And I take my responsibility both as a board member and as an architect very, very seriously. My role in this project, I wanted to have people understand that when Northeastern asked us to begin, it began with really first to understand their needs and their goals for the program that Jeff was talking about. And to spend time to truly understand that, and then to work closely with them to define that as far as what a building might mean to house those goals and those needs. We then investigate. We investigate the site and the environs, and we spend a lot of time trying to absorb and understand it. And that comes into very particular things, like when we investigate topography and things like that. People have seen disruption on the site. That was investigatory to try to understand the nature of some of the left-behind facilities. You know, the concrete quality of some of the bunkers, things like that. So that's what that's about, is try to learn more and more and to understand some of the regulations, the requirements. It takes a while to do that. Important that I wanted to just show that, you know, the site sits in a really sensitive spot between a neighborhood, very highly residential area, and Lodge Park, which is that remarkable spot way out on the point. And we recognize that. And our goal is, in any case, is to do as least, affect the landscape the least as possible. So a light footprint. The idea is that, interesting, I wanted to just mention that the site has- it's been very disturbed over its lifetime, this site. As you know, there's not much natural setting. It's largely man-made, okay, between the military interventions and things of the sort. So the idea is that it has almost no undisturbed area, except where the coastal edges are undisturbed. There also, you'd be surprised, there's not much buildable area out there. Because other than on top of bunkers, which some of them are small bunkers, and then there's the one large bunker, is there's the floodplain in the middle. And what you see in blue on this slide is the FEMA area for flood-prone area. So when you take all that into consideration, there's not a lot of building area. So threats, I did hear people worried about the growth of this facility beyond even this. I think you'll see that we're trying to take into account how little area there is to build. So then what do we do after we investigate? Well, then we develop options. And we start considering, where could you put a building in a place like this? So we begin to look at options, and that has to do with the size of a building, where you could locate it, and even get into rough order of magnitude costs, and to share those with the university, and ultimately develop a recommendation, okay? So on December 21st, we were finally approved with a recommended direction to pursue further into actual design. So we don't have design to share with you today, but I would like to share with you the thoughts that have led us to that recommendation. And perhaps even show some background on the things that we discarded. So what you'll see is a recommended scheme. And it might be hard for people to see this, but I didn't know Nahant had a little town has a little screen. Next time, we'll bring a big screen. But so in this case, what our proposal is, is to build on the east edge of the Murphy bunker. And what that means is that, and it's between the north and south gun ports. So it preserves those, the round gun ports on each end, and it builds between those. And what's interesting about this is that the whole concept is we believe it best preserves open space and minimizes its footprint on the land. And to best illustrate that, there's a cross-section. So this is a cross-section through pretty close to the middle of Murphy bunker. The existing Edwards and the town is to the left. East Point is out to the right on this image. So what the building does, interestingly enough, is it utilizes the bunker. It can integrate with the bunker and actually harmonize with what's going on in the program down below. There's a bit of research inside there. But that meant we could also renovate some of that space inside the bunker to minimize the amount of new space we had to build because they're joined now. So that helped us to reduce the amount of new building to the lowest we could find a way to do it. The next thing it does, it allows us to utilize the bunker as a foundation, interestingly enough. When you take a piece of concrete that's 10 feet thick in places, we thought, hmm, that's pretty robust. Why not use that instead of digging new foundations if we can avoid it? So we were able to use some of that. The other thing we could do here is we can screen the building from Nahant. The little piece that sticks up on top can be screened by existing and new vegetation on the west side. And then, in fact, it can also be screened on the right side by not only the trees, but we can take some of the soil that we need to remove and pile it up on the east side to actually bury much of the facility. Now what the program is down below, what's really fascinating about this is that the piece that's underneath is mechanical space largely. And what's nice is we can avoid putting rooftop mechanical on. So if you could put most of the mechanical space slung underneath and use the area with that slope, the old batterment slopes on the side, use that for distribution and actually feed all the systems from underneath. Now you don't have those many buildings for science, as you know, have unattractive penthouses on the top for equipment. And this would allow us to avoid that and remain within the zoning guidelines of a height to keep it down. Finally, we thought that we could, the area that it actually touches, undisturbed land, is minimized. In a sense, the footprint of this building is around 15,000 square feet where it touches the ground because it actually slings over an existing basement-type structure. Now, as we go forth, I'm going to show some things. We take the computer, what we use for our processes, we took photographs. And we took the ones in the winter that show, I guess we call them most visibility through the trees, okay? And you're going to see photographs, and you're going to see these blocks in there. And they're going to have these sort of stripes where floors might be. And that's it. These are not designs. I have to have everybody understand that. They're not designs. It's as if I cut out a piece of foam and put it somewhere in a model, but it's in a photograph. But you'll be fooled because everything else is real, okay? So you with me? All right. So here we go. We thought it'd be nice to show the preferred scheme. First, let's look from 40 steps on the approach from up there. This is the existing condition. And this is, again, that block model, and hopefully you didn't see much. So the point is that it's behind, from this point of view, it's pretty much behind the bunker. You might see a touch at the very north edge, but then you'll see something that we're considering for the entrance. So where the existing entry port is to the Murphy bunker, we're looking at putting in a bit of vertical circulation there, perhaps a small elevator as a way to get up and into the facility. So pretty much that's all you'd see from this side. To show a closer view on Swallow Cave Road near the entrance to the campus, there's a better view here. This is the existing condition. Now you can see the entrance to Murphy. And then this is this idea that maybe there'd be something in the entry to help you get up and into the facility up and over the bunker. So again, minimal intervention. Now Lodge Park, what we thought out here, if you build it to the east side, this is the existing photo, and again, a rough model idea of just a block of a form, is that we can bury the building, it's between the two gun ports.
Let him do his presentation, please. Please. Let him finish.
So the idea of placing the building to the east of the bunker between the two gun ports is the idea that the slope can come up in the middle, put the earth back there. And these are winter trees, so it shows it in its most transparent form. I want to go back and show some things that were investigated prior to coming to this conclusion. So first was, and the most obvious to Northeastern before we came aboard, was why can't we add to the north side of Edwards? And once we considered the guidelines, zoning restrictions of side lot, lot line setbacks, and the wetland staying away from the floodplain, it left us with too small a footprint. And the resultant was, this is from 40 steps, it had to be a three-story building, which doesn't conform to your height restrictions. So this would have been a far too large building. You can see it from up close. So this was not considered anything that the university wanted to continue with. The next scheme that was investigated was what if it was west of Murphy bunker and pushed further to the south? And it was, in order to keep it out of the floodplain, it had to be pushed this far south. The problem with this scheme was that it required a taking over of the easement, that is, the actual access up to Lodge Park, and didn't seem like it would go anywhere. So this one died quickly. But the way this looks, again, it also had a very big presence towards the town that we thought would be best avoided. And again, you have to keep in mind, there's no articulation, there's no design. Their box is showing mass. The next solution was what if you built entirely on the east side, on the plateau between the bunker and Lodge Park? And this is the last option we could consider, and we were not in favor of it because even though from the town it was not visible, we were afraid that from Lodge Park, you couldn't even screen it with sloping slope or you could not use enough planting to hide it, and its entire roof scape became evident as well. So these were the three other schemes that were pursued that were not considered viable. And we ended up thinking that the recommended scheme is the least impact on the community. And that's what I have. So thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen, I've listened to the folks in town, and I firmly believe that this is not a good- it's not a good thing for the town. So I'm going to entertain a motion because this has really, literally, been driven into the town since December 21st, that when and if Northeastern submits a permit application, that the town's Board of Selectmen will consider petitioning the land court for an injunction to stop any permit issues. Seconded by Mr. Lombard. So the motion's been made, it's been seconded for discussion. Any discussion, gentlemen? T.? Nope. Richie?
Yeah, I just think this whole thing, we just very simply, very simply say no.
Talking to the microphone.
No to Northeastern. The town manager and I had a meeting with them over a year ago, and they promised, they said, once they finished the impact to the beach, there'd be no more projects. This is over a year ago. And then all of a sudden, we got a $30 million project sitting up here and having hearings, and the board had no idea that was being held. And all of a sudden, we've got problems. Well, very simple, Mr. Northeastern, you know, this, this construction, this expansion should stop now. This is it. We need, we need, we need to take every step on the Board of Selectmen legally, whatever it is the impact, because this town is way too small. Out of 351 cities and towns, we're the smallest, and we've got this major project going on, expansion, not only the traffic with 200 or 300 more students, you know? And the money they're making, and it's just, it's just awful. I just, it's just, it's a disgrace, and I don't know where the heads were at when they did this. And they give me all the gobbledygook and everything. You could take pictures from Egg Rock, it won't matter. You could take it, you could take it, you could take a drone over the area. It doesn't matter. We do not want the extension or expansion of Northeastern.
Okay, now, Mr. Taylor?
Well, thank you, Richie. I'd like to start by thanking the chairman for having this meeting. For the past few months, if not since I've been elected, I've been concerned with transparency. This one meets, that one meets, this is talked about, that's talked about. That's Nahant, I understand that. But this is what transparency, this is what it's all about for me. I really thank all the effort of all the people here. You did a great job.
All right, now, oh, okay, I'm not done. I don't want to interrupt you.
I'm going down memory lane for those of you who've been here as long as I have. As a kid, my friends and I would go to East Point to watch them raise and lower the Nikes. And we used to have a great time there. And in the winter, my friends and I would have snowball fights with the military men there. And we always had a blast up there because it was wide open. It was just fantastic. Now, that's my memory lane and my transparency. I was contacted by a lobsterman, I'd say, two weeks ago, three weeks ago. It doesn't matter when. And it concerned just the pump house. And it became more and more apparent that I was not going to go to any meeting because this is where it should have been. Now, I have grave concerns with infrastructure, but you people have more concerns when you speak. So I'm not going to tell you all my concerns. But I'm really worried about the infrastructure. This is a nice, quiet town. My neighbors and I talk all winter about rolling up the sidewalks, and we don't see each other. That's what this town is about. I've been here forever. I've been here forever, and I'm going to, I'm telling you, I'm 100% against this. 100% against this. And I believe we should have, this is the beginning, this is the beginning, as far as I'm concerned, of probably a long legal battle. But I say we do the battle. Now, I received, all of us, but I received plenty of emails and texts, or whatever your young kids call it. But I want to read two of them that really struck home with me. One, "I count on your leadership in our effort to preserve the beauty and peacefulness of Nahant." That really struck home. That was, that and the sign of someone with the big heart on it, "Save Nahant," that was beautiful. And two, "Please step up and help us protect and keep this wonderful and very special spot on Earth." Thank you.
Okay. Mostly, my reasons for the injunction would be, we don't know, they don't know, and we don't know where the easements are. They're referenced, and no one can tell us where they are. They're not clearly defined. We haven't found a letter of intent from the government. That has yet to be found, what the intent was from Henry Cabot Lodge. Deeds that have restrictions are not clearly defined. Until the town can do a clear title search and survey and reference all these documents, it's my recommendation that we do immediately, you know, consider the court injunction and that we go forward with that. And I'm going to read something, too, and this is back in, and I promised the town clerk I wouldn't ruin her books because I'll be in a lot of trouble, all right? Last year, this is from 1964, okay? "Last year, the town decided not to appropriate money for the purpose of acquiring the property from the federal government. The commission feels, however," and this is from the Conservation Commission, by the way. "The commission feels that at least it would be desirable to acquire, for the townspeople, if possible, without expenditure of money, the right to walk along a scenic pathway which would follow as much of the shoreline as included in this property." So what they're saying is, they want, the town wanted to be able to walk around that whole area with no problem. I lost my place. Whether or not this will be possible depends not only on the Whether or not this will be possible depends not only on the desires of the town, but also on the willingness of the government to grant a revocable license or easement for this purpose. "We have been negotiating both with officials of the General Service Administration, GSA, and the U.S. Navy. The latter, at the time of this report, contemplated the acquisition of approximately seven acres of the total property." That's ours, seven acres. We don't have that. Nobody has that determination. It stops there. And we don't know what happened after that. Did the government, these are all things that have to be answered before we allow anybody to build up there or do anything up there, and quite frankly, they shouldn't be building up there. They've got enough. End of story. The motion stands on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries.
I'd like to have one more thing. I'd like to have everyone in the audience that's against this project stand. As you know, this is all being recorded, Rick Echecan. We want to win. We want to win, and we want to leave each point as it is. Thank you.
Okay, so now, gentlemen, I'm going to open this up to the public, and I want to ask, is Josh Antrim here?
Peter Barber's right there.
Okay. What?
Just proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh Antrim.
Right, Mike?
Yep. Talking to the microphone, please.
Hi, everybody, I'm Josh Antrim. I had the pleasure of growing up here in Haunt, so I've been kicking around, not as long as T., but quite a while. And Ellen and I raised our three children here. And so obviously, we really love the town in Haunt, and, but whether you have lived here a long time, or you're a newcomer to town, we really need to care deeply about what happens at these point. I think our selectmen have expressed the views of, of all of us. And, you know, when Northeastern bought this land back in the 1960s, it was on the assumption that they were going to help preserve that place as, for conservation and, you know, good intentions. And, you know, for that, that worked for many years, you know? For a long time, it was a small lab with a handful of dedicated scientists doing really interesting work. But, and, you know, I love the science, it's great stuff. But this is not about that, this is about building a, a building that's way out of scale with the town, way out of scale with the place. It just doesn't belong there. I think, you know, all of us that have been up to Lodge Park know what a beautiful place that is. We go up there and get our spirits rejuvenated, and whether it's freezing cold and howling wind, or a beautiful summer day, it's just a great place to be. The houses are all far enough away, and Boston's in the distance, and everyone, everything's far enough away that you feel like you're really in a wild place. And when I look out across the ocean and see the sun shining off the ocean, I don't want to turn around and see the sun shining off a 60,000-square-foot building. I think it's, I think it's really important to remember, too, that, that what we were just shown is, is the box, right? And with that box goes about two acres of parking lot, and road, and lights, and all the rest of it. So that is, that's by far the best-case scenario, what we're being shown, so we've got to remember that, too. But, you know, thanks for sharing, and thank you, selectmen, for, I think, speaking really for the majority of the townspeople. We really have to stop this right now.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to, you know, avoid you, but Chris Bouda wanted to speak, and I have one after that. Josh, okay, Josh Mahoney.
Thanks, everyone, for showing up tonight. It's really great to see everyone come up to this meeting. Thank Jeff Tressel, sorry, Jeff Children, and the Board of Selectmen for having it also. I wrote this, they got up and talked about this building, but building's just part of it. There's a whole other aspect to this expansion they're talking about. It's the seawater that they want to use, you know, the seawater that flows around Nahant. Up until 2012, Northeastern University's Marine Science Center pumped 15,000 gallons an hour totaling 360,000 gallons a day. In 2012, they upgraded their system and doubled their pumping capacity, enabling them to pump 30,000 gallons an hour with 720,000 gallons a day. At their meeting at Northeastern University on February 8th, Marine Science Center Director Jeff Tressel admitted to running both six-inch pipes at once. In theory, this gives them the potential to be pumping as much as 1.4 million gallons a day. The threshold for a NIPD's permit is only 1 million gallons a day. This dramatic increase should have required them to apply for a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, a NIPD's permit. Mysteriously, this fell through the cracks. To add perspective to these numbers, the New England Aquarium uses 1,250 gallons an hour and 30,000 gallons a day. They're using 30,000 gallons an hour right now. The New England Aquarium was required to apply and receive for a NIPD's permit. This NIPD's permit ensures both the EPA and Mass DEP water quality standards are upheld by both requiring that the discharge be monitored and spot-checked by both the EPA and Mass DEP. Thermal plume studies of effluent discharge would also be mandated, along with various other measurements and standards. Another major concern is the antiquated method that Northeastern University uses to discharge its effluent back into the ocean. The effluent should not be dumped out the sea wall to flow, flow and scour bathing beach while absorbing heat and returning effluent in a warmer and altered state back into the bay. The ecologic, ecologically appropriate method would have a discharge pipe extend into the ocean with a way to diffuse the effluent back into the ocean water to ensure proper mixing and dispersal. This would help mitigate the effluent from collecting in volume in certain geographical locations around Nahant. The seawater they use affects the local environment in two ways, at least two ways. First, it kills any fish, lobster, and crab larvae in the water as it passes through their pumps. Secondly, the discharged effluent is at a warmer temperature than when initially brought into the system. This warmer water, in turn, degrades the local environment to the point that native species flee for colder water and invasive species move in. Northeastern University claims the seawater effluent will be within 1 degree Fahrenheit of the average seawater surface temperature. Although they are not using the seawater surface temperature at the shag rocks, they're using a NOAA buoy reading 15 miles from Nahant. 15 miles from Nahant. Regardless, they are still adding heat to the local marine environment, using abstract numbers, and these numbers would work pretty much from mid-June to mid-August, something similar to these numbers. If they are pumping seawater at 52 degrees Fahrenheit, their inlet lines are on the bottom of the ocean at minus 20 feet meanwater low, and discharging that water back at 61 degrees, even if the NOAA buoy reads 60 degrees sea surface temperature, they've still warmed the water by nine degrees, not the 1.5-degree required limit. If no one, if not everyone got a handout, I can provide you with one, or email you one. So I'm going to talk about this chart that I wrote briefly, that I marked up. "I believe the current 720,000 gallons a day of seawater that the Marine Science Center is already pumping is already adversely affecting the local marine environment. On the marked-up chart of Nahant attached, the purple designates underwater ledges that prevent the effluent from escaping the shallows around Nahant. The blue arrow represents the tide as it flows in and out of Mass Bay. The red line represents the effluent pass on an, the effluent path on an incoming tide, and the yellow on an outgoing tide. The south side of Nahant sees the most dramatic warming from the effluent because it gets trapped in Nahant Harbor by Spindle Ledge and Joe Beach Ledge. Even on an outgoing tide, a large volume of effluent remains trapped, only ever being cleared by a nor'easter, which seldom occurs from the middle of June through the middle of September. The effluent on an outgoing tide gets forced into Canoe and Forty Steps Coves because of Kooch Shoal and Saunders Ledge. Although the changes are not as dramatic as they are on the south side, they're still present on the north side." According to the 2016 Mass, according to the 2016 Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries Statistics, the town in Nahant is the 13th most productive lobster port in the Commonwealth. The 13 commercial lobstermen landed 473,000 pounds of tasty crustaceans in 2016. The ex-vessel value of Nahant's 2016 lobster landings were $2.2 million. This money extrapolated out into the local economy of the Commonwealth has a multiplying effect of $8.7 million. This is all predicated on a healthy marine environment. The Gulf of Maine has been shown to be warming faster than 99% of all other ocean waters. During the 51 years that Northeastern University has occupied East Point, and the more than 30 years that Northeastern University has pumped seawater into the Marine Science Center, it has never once taken the time to study the impact of their seawater system has had on our local ecology. Even going back to 2012, when Northeastern University doubled the seawater intake and consequently their thermal footprint on the Gulf of Maine. For a university that boasts about urban coastal sustainability, it has done very little to study its own effect on our local environment. As a university that aspires to be a leader in marine science, it should and needs to be held to a higher moral and ethical standard. That standard begins with a comprehensive, long-term, long-term study of the ocean water, the currents, and the ecology in which they want to draw seawater from and discharge back into. A helpful analogy to visualize the impact of their effluent on the local marine environment is to picture a huge garden representing the water around Nahant. The soil in our garden is excellent. Now, every day, Northeastern University enters our garden and takes a shovelful, or 720,000 shovelfuls, of our excellent soil and replaces it with poor soil. Over time, our garden will become less productive. Of course, plants will still grow, but not the crops we want or need. It's my belief that before any seawater pumping increases are allowed, the current pumping capacity needs to be studied. The primary goal of the scientific study should determine the maximum sustainable water consumption the local environment can safely absorb. I believe if this problem is honestly studied, the results will demonstrate that the original capacity of 360,000 gallons a day is more realistic than the current 720,000 gallons. Further expansion should never be considered without a long-term, in-depth study by an I just want to say one more thing also. If, we've all seen the work they did at Canoe Beach, the Canoe Beach Restoration. You know, if you had asked them, you know, while they were doing the project, "What studies have you done? What engineering have you done?" They would have told you, "Oh, you know, I don't know," but I'm assuming they would have said, "Oh, we did it all, we, don't worry about it." And we all saw how that turned out. One nor'easter later, the beach is gone, you know? And now they want to do this seawater system without having any studies. They've been there for, they've been pumping water for over 30 years. They've done nothing. The original pipes are still left on the beach. They didn't even have the decency to take them out of the way, to get rid of them. And they say, "Trust us, trust us with our environment, trust us with the water that you let your kids swim in. It's all good, don't worry about it." So I just think a lot more needs to be looked into this. We need to hold them to that higher standard.
Okay, Peter, Peter Capano?
Yes, yeah, I'll be really brief. Thank you for letting me speak, I appreciate you letting me do that. I'm a city councilor in Lynn, I live on 101 Alley Street in Lynn. I know how tough your job is, and it's a tough job, and you wouldn't do it if you didn't love the communities you represent. So I, I had a meeting, a couple of meetings, people I know in Nahant, and, a couple of weeks ago, and without, without repeating what people have already said, one of the suggestions that was made was that, that Northeastern could look at moving to Lynn, just right across the way. From what I understand, and I'm definitely not a scientist, there's less negative environmental effect, as pointed out by Mr. Mahoney, and there's a lot of benefits that Lynn have to, has to offer, the area is zoned for marine-related use. I spoke to the Economic Development Director, and he's going to roll, roll out the red carpet for Northeastern, if they want to come to Lynn. So, Mr. Cowdell couldn't make it here tonight, but he asked me if we could get a commitment at least to meet with EDIC in Lynn to talk about the possibility and the feasibility about, of moving to Marine Boulevard over in Lynn. Thank you. So I'd like to do that.
Okay, Peter Barber?
Yeah, Pete Barber, 22 Emerald Road. I appreciate the fact that Northeastern and the architect went to great lengths to try and conceal the building. I think, let me finish, please. I think that probably not enough was done. But the other thing that needs to be looked at is not just the impact of the building in town, but what would this do to the town? We're a small town, smallest town in Massachusetts, roughly 4,000 residents, some winter in Florida, but we, generally around 4,000. What happens when you build a 60,000-square-foot building in our town, and you have an additional 100, 200, 500 cars coming in and out of town? What's that impact on our infrastructure? Our fire department, we have a very small fire department, some of it's volunteer. There's a fire or issues at that building, can our fire department handle it? Can our police department handle all that extra traffic? Can our roads, can our sewer systems, can our water systems handle such an impact? I think if you look at those as carefully as you looked at the placement and hiding the building, you'll probably come to the conclusion that there really isn't a good solution of putting a building this size in Nahant.
I might add that, I might add that we have, the Board of Selectmen writes the budget every year, and the police chief has asked for a 12th officer that we can't afford. And I just want to remind everybody, and the Finance Committee has the duty of also saying, "You can't, you can't have it." Times have changed in this country, as we all know, and in the world. And I can tell you that if you have, if we have this with 300 additional people, a bigger building and so forth, how are we going to hire, I mean, how's the town going to afford to be able to hire another police officer, more fire personnel? Can you hear me?
Yes.
More, more fire personnel. It's just not feasible for us. We're also having an issue with the roadway going up 40 steps, the 40-step reventment. And that's under litigation right now, and we, you know, we can't, we, we really can't afford to have that collapse. DEP's arguing with us, we have a, a great environmental attorney working with us. And what you don't know is, if that roadway gives way, we lose gas, electric... And what you don't know is, if that roadway gives way, we lose gas, electricity, the infrastructure just collapses. I don't know what their reasoning is. They call it beach nourishment. That would be really a big beach nourishment if that road collapses. Trust me. I pity the poor people that are down there at Forty Steps going to the beach when it does. So we just can't afford to have this happen. We need to work as a community to take care of this.
Thank you very much. Judy Solora, 17 Simmons Road. I'm confused. Are they two separate projects? Are they one project? So does the water intake, is it tied to the large building? Are they two, does it watered intake and large building? Can they be done separately? I didn't understand how that fits together, not for either of them, but I didn't understand how that fits together. And what I don't understand is how a university could be so poor at change management. It doesn't make sense to me.
I'm going to let them answer if it's one or two projects.
So my name is Matthew Kate. I am, I work for facilities for Northeastern to answer the question of the woman who was just up here. It is two projects. They are, yes, the seawater will feed the new building because it is in addition to the existing structure that the bunker is. However, seawater is already being provided to the bunker, so as part of the seawater project, we are looking to upgrade the existing infrastructure, not add additional. The seawater on the seaside will be handled, again, as part of a separate project, that will be increasing in volume.
Sorry, I just, maybe it makes sense to everyone else, but I need to be just a little clearer, please. If the water intake, does that require for that building? If we don't do that building, do we need that much seawater?
Yes. The existing.
With your existing structure? How are you going to process that much seawater?
So our existing infrastructure, the seawater system that is there now is sized to handle 500 gallons per minute. Due to some restrictions, biofouling, which is basically the growth of mussels in those pipes, that restricts the flow, so we're not currently getting that 500 GPM. And as a result, there's some adverse effects to the research. So what our current projections show for the research that occurs today, we actually need about 1,500 GPM. And I can let Jeff talk to that if there's more detail. Yes.
Yes. It's, the building that they're going to put up, from what I understand, is a dry building. You're not going to have water going into that building.
Correct.
No seawater goes into that building. So in other words, it's two separate projects. That's what he's trying, that's right. They still want to do the seawater project.
So to clarify, you were concerned about the building?
Ma'am?
Sorry, Elizabeth Hall, 73 Warf Street.
All right, thank you.
So I guess I'm just, I'm following what was said. So in case people didn't hear what she said, so, before I get to my point, so the building itself is a dry building, doesn't need to be there, they need extra water, that's a separate project. Was that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. So my concern, as a resident and living on Warf Street, because I'm close to Forty Steps, is the amount of traffic that that's going to bring, is in terms of that many cars, 200 cars? Where is that going to be parking? So the building itself is, you're looking to hide the building, that's fine, but where is the parking going to be? We're going to see that parking if you're putting that in there. Is that, are you putting the parking underground? Or is it going to be on the road? We already restrict people parking in Nahant, so adding an additional 200, 300 cars to Nahant, what the heck? That's going to affect our breathing quality, not just the location. I'm, that's just too many cars. We already restrict parking here in town. What, I'm concerned with that amount of cars and parking, where the heck it's going to be.
Mr. Taylor was. One minute, Jim, just to follow up on what Peter Barber had said. The police, the fire, the DPW, extra people potentially, the infrastructure that Enzo talked about, da-da-da-da-da, more and more and more money from a university that doesn't
Let the Northeastern team address the infrastructure question.
Yes. Could you, would you like to?
On a couple of, first, a direct answer to the woman's question. Parking for the facility will be entirely on-site. It will be in compliance with the bylaw requirements for the town of Nahant.
Where? Where?
I'll repeat and just emphasize, this project is in its infancy. What you're seeing are very preliminary plans. As the plans get developed further, issues as to the amount and the location of parking and the surface treatment for parking will be addressed. I'm sitting here as a Nahant resident, as an attorney, who is working with.
Please, let him speak.
Who is working with Northeastern in an effort to not only deal with local permanent issues, but also to deal with identifying, addressing what I would recognize to be local issues, and what we're hearing is local issues. I'm here with a pad of paper, a lawyer's pad of paper, writing down the things that I hear are being of concerns, so as the project moves forward through various stages, we can begin to address those issues. So issues about infrastructure needs, whether they be water issues, whether they be drainage issues, whether they be sewage issues, those have to be quantified. We've been provided just recently with information from the town as what currently exists. We need to look at that in conjunction with what the demands of the facility, to make sure whether the systems are adequate, and if they're not, what's going to be necessary to upgrade them so they will be.
Okay, thank you. First, you have to understand that we, I had asked for a period of time where they could, we could sit down with them. This has been thrown at us December 21st, and I can tell you, this just didn't happen December 21st. This has been going on for a while. And I think, I think honesty is always the best policy, and I just don't think, I think there's holes everywhere. And it's just not sitting well with me, and I can tell you that, and that's the reason why I had stated, you know, made that motion before, we need to absolutely sit down and look at our deed. We have a deed, they have a deed, we need to look at this stuff. We just cannot bypass it. You don't know where they're going to put the building. We don't know what's going to happen. They want to just get this going by the springtime, and that's absolutely ridiculous. So that's pretty much all I have to say. I think it's just rushing it. I think that the injunction's going to have to work in our favor, and we're going to have to move forward. Mr. Walsh?
So my name is Jim Walsh, 33 High Street, Nahant. Yesterday, the Lynn item let me write a thousand words about this project. I'm now going to tell, recite the whole thing. You don't mind, do you? No. All right. But here's one of the reasons that I wrote it. If you have a project that is needed, then it needs to be done. So let's go back to 1941. There was a World War, so we needed to protect Boston Harbor. So within a period of eight or nine months, they built an incredible defensive system down at East Point. In the 1960s, there was a Cold War going on. There was fear of the Soviet Union. Therefore, at East Point, we had a Nike missile base because there was no alternative. But here, for this project, there's an alternative. And it's an alternative, I believe, Jeff, that will fulfill your dreams for science, for progress, for all the things that you and your colleagues want to do. The work that needs to be done is not work that requires you to look out the window and see the ocean. The work that you're going to be doing will be done on a computer screen, it'll be done in conversation, people will read, people will talk. You do not have to have East Point in order to do your work. So there is an alternative. So the people of Nahant are not anti-science. They're not against learning. They're not against the university. But what we're saying is that you are looking at our community differently than the way we look at our community. Now, where's my friend, the architect? Now, if Northeastern came and said, you know what? We think we need 60,000 square feet on, in Marblehead, right in the middle of Marblehead. The question I would ask you, my friend, is where would you be sitting? Would you be sitting up there, or would you be sitting out here? So I guess one of the reasons I wrote that article yesterday was out of respect for Jeff's dream, but I hope you will, you will respect our dream and our community as well. One last point.
Okay, Jim.
One last point. If I could remember it. All right. Enzo, you're going to interrupt me? Go ahead. Wouldn't be the first time. Were you going to say something?
No.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, of course, I mean, that's the alternative. We have the alternative. Mr. Capano is here. I've talked to the head of the EDIC in Lynn. I talked to our state representative. I talked to our state senator. I talked to everybody, and all of them say, yes, let's go to Lynn. Come on, come on over. And the social benefits in Lynn are tremendous. So you have positive outcomes in Lynn, and in Nahant, it's all negative. It's all negative outcomes. So Jeff, let's try to make all the dreams work.
Okay. Mr. Bradley?
Larry Bradley, 33 Summer Street, Nahant. I am sort of appalled that the view here is all one-sided, and I hope that you can go back and think about what happened tonight. I was instrumental in getting Northeastern here in the beginning, back in the 70s. People were looking for oceanography locations, and we found, I realized that Northeastern was interested in a piece of property for a oceanography facility. And they had just lost out on a bid for the South Shore. And I called up Asanul, the president of Northeastern, and mentioned that we had some land available over here. And he came by within the week to take a look at it with his support team, and they grabbed it. Now, I envisioned this as a piece of, it's not sacred property, but it's a chance for us to solve one of the problems we had. The property, the town did not want the property, they didn't want to accept it from the government and make a park out of it, because then they would have to open it up for parking for everybody else in the world. Government rules. So this is one way of being restrictive on the property and controlling who comes into town. Now, one of the things I want to mention is what happens when these, what happens when things change? You have a facility here, they've been very successful, and now they have money to expand. This is an excellent opportunity to join in with them. However, yes, we disagree on some of the terms of which they, what they can do, but I hope you don't give up hope, because my wife was involved with the Conservation Commission here when the Boston sewer outflow was being developed, and they had plans for dumping their outflow after processing, just one process, within a mile of Nahant. And they would come to meetings and show, they cut it off Nahant, showing where the water was. So there was people who didn't think about it, didn't realize that Nahant was on the other side of the map. So what happened is my wife and other people in the Conservation Commission kept going to meetings and following up on this. The result is that the outflow went, I think it was nine miles out, in another direction near the, nearer the steeper drop-off of the land. And they ended up having to use secondary treatment in addition to primary treatment. So it's a case where something very typical for Nahant, and I realize it would have been a mess, but they were able to come to agreements. They worked, Boston worked out another facility. And I think that's, we ought to go back and give Northeastern a chance to take another look at this and come back with another proposal and work with them. They'll work with us, we'll work with them.
Okay.
The next meeting is a little more smooth.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. I want to point out, Mr. Bradley is the husband of Paulie Bradley, who started Swim. And if it wasn't for her, there would be, let me tell you, she's a wonderful woman, smart woman, did a lot for Nahant. The successor, we have her successor here tonight, Mike Paddock. And also, we have, I forgot to mention that Linda Pivotcheck is here, and I just want to let you know that there are some endangered birds up in that area. It's an important bird area. If Linda wants to get up and talk later on, that's fine. I'm not, I don't know much about birds. I like to look at them, but they're the experts, not me, so. And I'm going to go to the next Bea Rogers.
Bea Rogers, 44 Pearl Road. I just.
I just, I've been listening to what everybody has been saying, but the presentation, it seemed to me, thank you very much for a thorough description of the building and the alternatives that were rejected, but we haven't heard anything about why. What are the uses that the building's going to be put to? And, you know, what's the driving force behind this? I mean, we've seen the building, but we haven't seen anything around it. And just parenthetically, I assume with wetlands and everything else, environmental impacts have also need to be studied, and we haven't heard about that. So I just think it was a little incomplete for what we would be interested in hearing.
Gentlemen, if anybody, yeah, go ahead.
Aque.
She, he.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're just going to let Jeff answer the question, please.
Thank you for the question about what it is that we're trying to accomplish. Basically, in a nutshell, we're trying to bring together interdisciplinary scientists and engineers to address a number of big challenges that are facing coastal ecosystems and coastal communities. And we've learned over the past six years, as we've been starting to build up the Marine Lab, that bringing together people from diverse disciplines and backgrounds really creates a lot of magic in terms of the types of solutions that emerge. And so the building is really a purpose, it has a couple of main focuses. One is graduate education, so the training of the next generation of scientists, primarily the doctoral level and the postdoctoral level. And then also using experience-based research experiences to enhance the educational experience of those people. The institute itself is focusing on a number of key issues. The three core themes are climate change science, security and sustainability of coastal resources, and environmental sensing. And so we are trying to bring together a diverse group of experts to address those challenges. Thank you.
Okay. Ma'am?
Okay.
Make sure you state your name, please.
Yeah, Aque. My name is Shinalee, and I'm a recent resident, 57 Lenox Road. And I come, this is my first meeting, so thanks for having me. So I come, I stand here, I guess, in representative of, I guess, three different aspects. For one, I stand here to represent the Native people who once inhabited these islands, whose ancestral remains may very well lie under the sites that you plan on putting these facilities, first and foremost. I'm not sure if people are familiar with, let me get my notes here, with NAGPRA, the Native American Graves Protection and Reparations Act. It's been documented that in these areas, there have been Native American ancestral remains. The very fact that that point of the island faces east, which is one of the directions where we would bury our dead. These waterways, these marshes, these fields, these, they were all our fishing grounds. My great-great-great-grandfather's whaling boat sailed these waters. So I stand here, first and foremost, as a representative of the Shinnecock Nation, which is actually out of New York, but it is a sister tribe of the Algonquin Nations that are in this area. So I'm also just wondering if Northeastern has consulted with any of the, I don't know, five or six or seven nations that once used and inhabited this island. So that's first. Second, I stand here as a Northeastern alumni. And having been a resident of Northeastern University, I was part of the, for lack of a better way to say it, the gentrification that Northeastern did to the Roxbury and Mission Hill area. And trust me, it is big, and it is beautiful, and Northeastern has taken over. So having been a participant in that takeover of those areas, I have seen what Northeastern is capable of, and I have also seen Northeastern devour the green spaces that used to be over by Renaissance Lot, over on Columbus Ave, and a few of the other places where Northeastern has built beautiful facilities. I am a proud Northeastern graduate, but I also know that you guys have plenty of money to go somewhere else. So just one other quick thing. I didn't, you know, for lack of a better way to say it, I didn't bust my butt at Northeastern to be able to live here, to have Northeastern come to me. I worked, I worked really, really, really hard to be able to have a little piece of this island, and to be able to walk these lands, and to be able to get away from the city. If I wanted to spend my money to live on Northeastern campus again, I would have bought a condo on Huntington Avenue, and I could have walked to my job. And so, so thank you for your time, Aque.
Christian, you want to speak? Linda?
Linda, I think would like to.
Okay, Linda, thank you.
She wasn't supposed to speak, I know, during the regular program, so.
We're going to learn about birds now.
We're going to learn about birds, right. The bird lady. But I do more than just look at them. I do some studies, breeding bird surveys and other studies with, oh, with Mass Audubon and other, well, Salem Coast Watch and other groups. But I'd like to bring your attention to East Point is a natural resource. And I know it was said that it was all previously disturbed, but guess what? It's growing back, and it is able to support over 160 birds that have been documented there. Hundreds of monarch butterflies have been photographed clumping during fall migration, and many species of bees documented by a student at the Marine Science Center. Nahant has been designated an IBA, Important Bird Area, by Mass Audubon Society, and it's met criteria for ornithological significance, including large fallouts of migrating birds. A number of state-listed birds endangered and threatened occur at East Point. Some are sea and shore birds, but there's many land birds, including the endangered short-eared owl, and three warbler species: northern parilla, blackpoll warbler, and morning warbler. One can see why birds are attracted to East Point. First, the unique location, jutting out into the sea. There are many species of ocean and shore birds, however, it's also on the migration pathway for land birds as they move along the coast in spring and fall. The undeveloped areas provide habitat for the land birds, and is known as a migrant trap. Second, the habitat is quite diverse, even though it was disturbed in the past, from shoreline, meadows, fields, shrubs and trees, and of course, the hills and the valleys, attracting many diverse species. Third, another significant feature is the valley beside Lodge Park, which is currently very peaceful and undisturbed, and allowing the birds to feed and nest successfully. With the current proposal, as I understand it, that could dramatically alter this wonderful haven for wildlife. The size of the proposed building will reduce habitat. Automobile and foot traffic will disrupt the present peaceful environment. And I'm not sure how tall the building is above the level of the ground, but if there are lights on at night, that could be a potential threat. Anyway, all things, I hope, will be considered. Thank you.
Okay, Linda, thank you. I just want to add that people might forget, we have certain zoning in Nahant, and that is zone as a natural resource area, and it should stay that way. Christian?
Hi, my name is Christian Bowder. I live at 3 Swallow Cave Road. I'm fairly new to Nahant, but I married a native Nahanter, so I'm very pleased and happy to be in this town. I really love it here. I had the pleasure recently of being involved in a small group of local residents who found out about this project early, and we were responsible for the flyer you all got in your I just want to say that one of the problems with this whole thing from the beginning is that there's been no transparency from Northeastern's side. Things have dripped out in bits and pieces, there's been a lot of gossip, a lot of misinformation, and obviously, that's led to a situation we're in today where nobody trusts you guys. And I just want to say to Northeastern, you have a very clear choice here. You've got a choice between pursuing this very palatable option that's being presented from the city of Lynn, or going up against us. And I just want to say, speaking for my fellow residents who are on a task force to oppose you, is we are damn determined to oppose you. And I won't speak for everyone in this room, because I know there are other opinions, but I would say the majority of Nahanters are damn opposed to you as well. So let's make this easy. Make it easy on us and easy on you, because we're going to make it ugly for you guys. I'll tell you right now, really ugly. We have the wherewithal to make it really ugly. I don't think you want to go there. You might be able to push this over on other communities, but this is a small, united community. And I would just say to my fellow residents, if they want to go ugly on us, let's stick together. We can be unified behind the idea of keeping our town for Nahanters. We came up with a motto for our opposition, and I hope you all embrace it. It's over there, "Save Nahant, keep it wild." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Christian. I also want to add that they've done a tremendous amount of work, these committees that have had these meetings, Chris Bowder and Diane Montieth, and there's a bunch of them, and they've really delved into it well, and they've done a lot of work. And hopefully, you understand that the Board of Selectmen couldn't really go to these meetings, because it would have been a, it would have been a huge conflict of interest, and we'd probably be in jail for that one. So it's nice that you guys did this, and we appreciate all your work.
If we could stop the project, I'd go to jail for that.
All right. So, next.
Chris Kowalski, 57 Lenox Road. I'm also a Northeastern alum. I actually met my fiance, it was a few speakers ago, at Northeastern. I was there '03-'08. So just a couple of points I want to talk on. The great education I received at Northeastern got me a great job. I'm currently a health physicist for an environmental decommissioning firm. So my specialty is nuclear safety. We do cleanups, I'm regulated, often audited on projects that I'm managing by not only the EPA, Mass DEP, DPH. And the data presented today is really shocking, that you guys have had an affluent flow for 30 years, no studies have been done. I know academia is fast and charged, and research, it has a little bit of a drive to it that sometimes overlooks the smaller details. But if I know I was doing this from an industrial side or commercial side, a client brought me this project, the fact that you guys are talking shovel-ready in the spring in a sensitive coastal area, I really find it hard to believe. I've gone through a number of permitting processes, I've done sampling, rounds and rounds of samples, dealt with all sorts of people at all these agencies. And the fact that you think you can just move through it after admitting you've exceeded your discharge permit already? If I'm correct to understand, you're running both pumps at the same time, and that slipped through the cracks? I mean, I work in the health and safety field, I know what would happen in the private world if that slipped through the cracks. And now, the second thing I want to talk about is maybe not the brightest of topics, but I was at Northeastern, like I said, '03 to '08. So that means I was there for the shenanigans, we'll call it, in '03, '04, '08. The Selectmen brought up earlier that we have, don't have the ability to hire a 12th police officer. And you're talking about bringing in 2, 3, 4, 500 students and professors into this small community, and we don't have 12 police officers? Think about what happened at Fenway Park my freshman year. What would happen if just a small fraction of those came out here? Or were living here, or were working here, and we happened to win the Super Bowl? What, what then? Let's be honest, look around this town, could it possibly handle that? I was on Huntington Avenue. I have video, 8-millimeter video from way back, and you don't want to see that stuff. I definitely know that, I went to Northeastern, busted my rear end, and now I found myself in this beautiful community. And like my fiance said, if I wanted to have that condo in Boston, I'd have it. I didn't, I came out here. You're really rolling this rock uphill, and as you can see by resolve, I think you're going to find it much more difficult than you anticipated. Go Huskies.
Paulette Marie is next.
Yeah, Stephen, I'd like to give just a couple of facts.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, two things. You did not hear from Northeastern that this is a project that was going forward this spring. That's just not a fact. The project go forward when the project's ready to go forward, but I don't think under anybody's wildest dreams, we anticipate a spring 2018 start. Secondly, the discussion about 500 students is grossly out of scale with what the student population would be at the facility. Right now, the projected student enrollment would be about 228, I believe is the number.
Come on, let him, let him, please let him finish. He's got to finish.
Forgive me. The total community of students, post-docs, and faculties projected to be, would be projected to be 228. That would include 75 PhD students, 20 master's students, a total of 40 faculty and staff, and anywhere from 20 to 30 undergraduates doing internships principally during the summer. So the projected.
Ms. Chairman, I overexaggerate as well, so it's 114, not 228.
Okay.
Not 500.
All right. So, okay, I understand. I think we can move on if there's any other. Paulette?
Just very briefly. Paulette Marie, 16 Harborview Road. So I just heard about this project fairly recently, and I happen to be the daughter of a lobsterman and the sister of a lobsterman, and I am not a lobsterman. What I am is someone who grew up in town and moved away for a few years and lived on the street adjacent to the University of Connecticut campus. So I have a little bit of familiarity with what it's like to live next to a large educational institution. And there are some benefits, and there are some negatives. So I'm happy to go into that, but more, I want to just speak on the issue that the Selectmen have raised. I think it's a legitimate issue about how do we hire another police officer, what would be the impact on the existing police force, what would be the impact on the fire department, et cetera. And I'm kind of surprised to hear that the town maybe has never asked in the past for what in Connecticut is referred to as pilot funds, payment in lieu of taxes. And it would seem to me that if the Selectmen reconsider perhaps being a little bit less litigious at first, and maybe sitting down with the people from Northeastern and some citizens from the community, there might be some option to find some funds to cover the expenses, and there might be some option to right-size the project for both the town and Northeastern. And so I see some things that, because this is such a new development for the town, haven't been addressed. And I hear these concerns about transparency or lack thereof, but we're here now. And frankly, I would rather see Northeastern up at East Point than see that property be sold to, and I'm not saying this to scare people, but to somebody else, to a developer or something like that. So I think there are some positives and negatives with. So I think there are some positives and negatives with this particular proposal, and I heard a lot of the negatives. But I'd like to see maybe the town and the university and the citizens come together and give that a shot before we start looking at other options. So, thank you.
Paulette? Paulette, I want to answer your question. I found out about the pilot program about three years ago. I asked Northeastern for some scholarships and some money for Johnson School. They gave me one scholarship, and when I said scholarship, I figured the cost of going to Northeastern is $65,000, basically, plus or minus. That's the basic tuition. They gave me a half scholarship, which was $30,000. And then they gave $25,000 to the Johnson School, which they can originally write off. I put pressure on, they gave me the second scholarship. Now they took responsibility of this facility in 1966. They paid $87,000. And they have not given us zero for almost five decades. Not a dime. Not to buy a fire truck, police car, a building, nothing. We had to go to them instead of them coming to us and saying, listen, we'd like to help out here. You know? But they haven't. It's always been, and on this project here, it's like, we don't know the score. I don't know all the numbers. You know, what's the size of this building? What's the height of the building? What's the... It's like bits and pieces. It's like pulling...
It's very new. I agree with you.
It's like totally confusing.
And so we need more answers. You're right to be asking for answers.
As we look for answers from them, they seem to keep going. They keep going with the process, and all of a sudden, we've got a finished product that we didn't know about. And I'll be honest with you, town manager agreed with me, Jeff. They told us a year ago there'd be no more projects. And then all of a sudden, a month ago, I was away, I came back, and I've got a major $30 million project. And I'm saying, how can that happen? What happened between a year ago and now? And that kind of misled us a little bit, and I'm very, very upset.
I can understand that you feel upset.
I'm very upset because on the pilot program, I had a Nahant resident drop the deck off of me. It was like that thick. When I sat in the conference room downstairs, I asked them for some money. Well, we don't really pay cities and towns. Excuse me, what about pilot? By the way, pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes. And we had the complete deck from Northeastern for that year for all the cities and towns. I had it in my hand, and I'm looking at them, and they're telling me, now it wasn't Jeff or John, it was the other management, and they said, oh, no, no, really? Here it is, right here. I mean, they give the other cities and towns, I mean, not scholarships. It was like, hello? They gave more things to the cities and towns where they're teaching, and it was amazing. I just sat there and said, this is unbelievable. And we missed the boat. And I blame myself, we should have asked.
You know, I'm not...
We should have asked, and we should have received.
You shouldn't blame yourself, but this is a time to ask.
Well, we've been asleep at the switch, and it's kind of quiet town. We just kind of let things go, nothing's happening up there, so we don't really... All of a sudden now, they've welcomed the sleeping giant. I think they think they're dealing with just people from, I'm going to say, Castine, Maine, way up, you know what I mean? I mean, I don't want to use Castine, Maine, great community, but I think they think we're dealing with people from Castine, Maine. And I'm sitting here going, hello? We've got more Harvard graduates in here, and more doctors, and more... I tell you, the lobstermen are all graduates. King's Point, Maine Maritime. I mean, these guys are bright, they're straight, they're honest, and what's going on here? And then all of a sudden, they've been, we've been served this, you know, they've been pumping warm water into Forty Steps Beach. I'm saying, well, I wonder why the water's so warm up here today? I kept saying, well, the water's warm, to the beach it's cold. Sharp edges go boat, up and forty steps, now I know! That's probably why I'm catching so many squid. Paulette, hold on. Paulette, you know, let me just say this. It has been mentioned, I have asked to sit down with a community group in Northeastern and the Board of Selectmen, because it falls on us, to sit down with them, and I've gotten no answer. So, it's not like we haven't asked. And I can tell you, the permitting process happens very fast, as you know, you're an attorney, and before you know it, they'll have all their permits in place, and then we're going to be out of luck. So, I've asked, I have put it out there to have a one-year, the whole thing, you know, let's talk about it, and I was turned down. So, the bottom line is, now we're going to play hardball. End of story. Okay. Christine?
You know, Enzo, I can understand that that makes perfect sense, because you really can't mediate anything unless there's something to mediate. So I do understand where you're coming from. I just ask you to ask for more.
Well, I have. I already have. Thank you.
And even in the process you're considering pursuing, you ask for more. They're asking, the town should ask, we should ask.
All right. All right, thank you. Christine?
Hi, Christine Johnson-Lisio, 15 Fox Hill Road. There are so many questions, but one I would like to know is, this is a publication I found online. Northeastern University put it out in 2015. It explains their mission, it has a picture of the building that they are going to put at East Point. I will make it available to anyone who wants to leave their email, I will send it to you. But it clearly shows that big glass box right here in 2015, and we are just hearing about it now, our town is just hearing about it now. It's shameful. Every resident of Nahant should look at this and know that this plan has been in the works for a long time. And this pump was the first step, and it should have been presented as part of a whole, not as part of another part. And in addition, I have to come back to why. You talk about scientists coming together to talk. This is a dry building, it's not a lab, it doesn't need to be there, it could be anywhere. I talked to my colleagues, and I don't have to be at East Point to do that. So I really feel, Nahanters, we've been talking tonight, but they haven't been talking to us. Though they've been talking to the world, they've been to Washington to lobby for funding, they've been getting a lot of money for this project, they're ready to go, but they failed to talk to their neighbors, and that's not being a good neighbor. So I ask you all to, if you're interested, sign up on the email listing. We can share information with you about what we're doing as an activist group, and we support your move tonight as selectmen to stop this project. Stop it. There are email listings on the clipboards that are circulating, and if you can find one of them and pass them to your neighbors, we'd appreciate it. But again, the question is why? And no one has answered why. Why here?
So just to answer your question about the flyer, you're right. I mean, conceptually, in terms of the academic mission of what we want to do here, or what we want to do as a university, that's been in the works since 2012 for sure. I can say to you, I mean, I'm just, if I can answer, the building that you see there, that's an advancement team just dropping a building in. There's no... I mean, we've always thought, okay, we want to enhance our teaching and research infrastructure, so obviously that would go into a building, but the idea that that was the building we were going to build, it's just, it's advancement people dropping something into a flyer.
And it's exactly what you showed us tonight. In fact, this one has more detail than the box you showed us tonight. So you just dropped a box on us tonight. There's no difference.
I understand what you're saying, but there wasn't architects involved with that, there wasn't engineers involved with that.
But there was a plan. There was a strategic mission.
We definitely have a strategic plan to pursue coastal sustainability, yes.
But we didn't, your good neighbors didn't know anything about it, and that's shameful. It's shameful.
Ma'am?
Hi.
State, please.
I'm Karen Regnanti, 14 Howe Road. I'm speaking from three different perspectives. First of all, my parents have, our family has been here for 61 years. My father was, he was head of the Board of Appeals for many, many years, and he has wrestled with this, and I grew up in an environment of watching him trying to make these very tough decisions and guide the town. So that's part of my background. I'm also, I also have a bachelor's and master's degree in biology with a specialty in environmental biology and marine biology. I have studied and lived in two of the premier marine centers in the country, USC's Center, I did my thesis at Catalina Island and Bowden College. And I can tell you, first of all, one of the very first rules of having a marine center is that only essential, essential people that have to be there are there. Because it's all about the footprint. So when I was at UCLA, and we were at, and Jeff, I can also, having had that experience, I also worked for Raytheon as an environmental biologist, and have done environmental impact analyses of nuclear power plants for Narragansett Bay. I then went on to do, I had a career in business for over 20 years, working for Apple, KPMG Consulting, Citigroup, and so I also understand the issues of scalability, risk analysis, and how to develop pragmatic business plans. And so I'm talking, I want to, I have five points. Hopefully I'll remember them all. But it's from a combination of these three aspects of who I am. The first is, I think that the residents of Nahant should know specifically what the legal issues are and what the legal rights are, what the processes, what the timeframes are, and what we have to do if we choose, which I think we have chosen, the people have spoken, if we want to stop this. It needs to be very clear, and I am requesting that you put it on the website. Please let us know. So there's complete transparency, and we're all working in cooperation of what the timeframes and the guidelines, what Northeastern's rights are as a university and what they aren't. What do they have to ask permission for? What don't they? That's the first thing. That's the second thing, is the process and to be putting it on. The third thing is, if you're going to, I think an environmental analysis needs to be done with all the stakeholders. And very often, when you do an environmental analysis, what happens is, you do look at the natural environment, which absolutely has to be taken into consideration. Linda Pevacek, swim, what's going on with the coastal environment? What's going on with the bees? What's going on with the species? All that's given. That has to be done, and I think it needs to be done for the current environment, and currently what's going on with Northeastern, regardless of expansion plans. And I also think that who does this environmental analysis, it should be done with a combination, it should be a joint task force of both Nahant people and Northeastern, so that we're working cooperatively with you for your current environment, so that what you're doing is an asset to the town, is an asset to you, and that you are, you're able to fulfill your mission as much as possible within what our constraints are, given the biology, the geology, and the culture of the town. So that's the second thing. That's the second thing of the third point. Okay, so, and when I, and these stakeholders need to be, not only the biologists, but the historians, the Native Americans, but it also, as you spoke to Enzo so brilliantly, both of you, you also, Richie, it's the infrastructure. You know, I mean, in Little Nahant, I'm in Little Nahant, and, you know, somebody hit a telephone pole, and we had no electricity for the whole day. I mean, honestly, one telephone pole. You know, you have to think about the scalability of what's even here. So it really needs to be looked at from an infrastructure perspective of what needs to be put in place to support what you're doing, so that it is viable, and so that we can have enough police people to help us. And so that, you know, our point of failure isn't so sensitive that if somebody hits a telephone pole, we're completely out of electricity. I mean, just as a residential community. So that's my third point. My fourth point, hmm, do I remember? My fourth point, I don't remember at the moment. Isn't that awful?
Skip to the fifth.
My fifth point, I'll go to my fifth point, maybe I'll remember the fourth point. My fifth point is that, you know, we're in a new era. We're in an era of transparency, we're in an era of responsibility, and we're in an era of walking our talk. And I firmly believe that anyone that is in the environmental business and is preaching and is teaching and is trying to really struggle with these massive issues of climate change needs to walk their talk. It's not only that we hold you to a higher standard, I believe that wherever you go, you should want to improve the footprint. You should want to bring prosperity at a higher level than what exists here. At least keep it the same, but add to the community. And I'm not saying that you haven't from an educational perspective. And having been in this environment, you know, I understand the challenge of what it's like to try to do this at your level. And that's my fourth point, is that, you know, when you really, when I step back, and maybe this is just my perspective, and look at what Nahant is, we're a natural, we're a protected seacoast, protected beach reservation, we're an Audubon sanctuary, and we're a historical preservation town. It's all about preservation and sustainability, and now potentially survival. And so my fourth point is that when I put my business hat on and look at it from Northeastern's perspective, I have to ask myself and say, honestly, guys, what are you thinking? From a business perspective? You know, if I was going to take, if you gave me $30 million, which, you know, I've had fairly large sums to invest in my career for these companies, and you gave me $30 million, and you told me you were going to, you know, let's build a center, would I want to build and stake my center on an ecosystem that's so fragile, that has such fragile infrastructure, that the causeway's built on a sandbar with rising tides? You know, and whose culture is, you know, we're not about economic development, Lynn is. Even Marblehead is, you know, they're industrial and commercial. I lived in Marblehead. It's a very different town. I loved it. But it's not Nahant. You know, this is preservation and sanctuary and economic sustainability. And I would encourage you for the success of what you want to do, because I think you have a noble mission. You know, what you want to do is to find a town for your expansion that is in line with what you want to do, that wants economic development, that has the infrastructure, that can support you, and keep out here what is just absolutely necessary from a footprint point of view, and so that we can support you. You know? So it's a win-win. And I wish you the best.
Thank you, Karen. Ando, ando. Jeff and us...
Thank you very much, and I would just like to say that I'm more than happy regardless of how this particular project goes. I asked the selectmen to, or the town manager, or however you would like to do it, to appoint a group of citizens, four or five citizens that are committed to working with us, to not only discuss this issue, this issue or any issue that comes up with respect to the Marine Lab, I think that would be very helpful for us moving forward. So, this issue aside, this building aside, I think that's something that we should do. and I would welcome it. Can I, can I ask you an honest question? Yeah. When I suggested that, why was I turned, why, why didn't I get a phone call back? Or why wasn't I answered? Suggested what, Enzo? Huh? Suggested what? I suggested that we have a committee, three citizens. Yeah. The Board of Selectmen. Yeah. And Northeastern sit down and talk about this and, and have a waiting period that we could sit down and do this in, and up to a year, and... Enzo, just to be respectful, I'd had no issues with the advisory board. The only issue that we disagreed upon, because I'm not the person to make that decision, was the one... I understand that. Then they should have, someone should, I asked, and I asked, and I asked for somebody to call me and please, I implored that we get this done so that we're not at this point. And it's a, and, and now you have a town that is very upset, including me, and, and the rest of the Board of Selectmen. And again, it's, it's, it's interpreted that you don't want to work with me, or you don't want to work with us, and that is not a good thing. Everybody has to work together in order to make the world go around, and that is just not, and all of a sudden, you're coming up to me and saying that you want to do it now at an open meeting, which is great. You know, it's an open meeting, but this could have been, we could have had a little bit of a dialogue before this happened. Sorry. Next. We got limited for time, so...
I'll be very quick. Cecil Rulo, I live at 144 Bass Point Road. It's, sounds like it's time to reboot the relationship between Northeastern and the town. And it sounds like Northeastern, you really have to, to do some work to reach out to us and engage with the lobstermen and the people who fear traffic, et cetera. And I hope you do it. And I hope you do it, and I'll tell you why, because I'm immensely proud to have you in my town.
Thank you.
And I want you to stay. And I want to thank you for the work you do in our schools, because you've changed my kids' lives. They go to school and they meet your students, they go to your open houses, to your bio blitzes, and they meet your scientists. And they had never done that before they came to live in Nahant. And I don't think you're only changing my kids' lives, I think you're changing the lives of all the students at the Johnson School, who interact multiple times a year with your graduate students and your scientists, who provide such amazing role models for our kids. So please stay, but please do engage with us. Do engage with us. I, I'm immensely proud to be in a town that supports scientific research. I'm immensely proud of the cutting-edge work that you do. Please stay, please engage with us. It seems like we have the same interests.
Yes, I, I don't disagree with it. I think it's, I think they've done a lot of good work in Nahant.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Lauren, go ahead.
I'll be brief, too. Lauren Sherlock, 17 Mayola's Road in Nahant. I just wanted to open by just thanking the, the participants here from Northeastern for attending and the opening statement that you were kind to give, that you were open to the input from our town. It sounded genuine, and I'm sure it is. And I think this is great to open up this kind of dialogue. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator all for the efforts that you've put into communication already on our behalf. So thank you very, very much. I'm also a Northeastern graduate, for my graduate studies, I'm a nurse practitioner, and I love studying there. I've always been really proud, as the previous speaker said, to be able to tell people that Northeastern has a presence in my town during marine science research. I think it's fantastic. I have two children at the Johnson Elementary School, who also benefit greatly from the relationship that Northeastern has with our school, and we appreciate that. We, we speak of it lovingly, both here in this room and all throughout town. So this isn't, you know, it's not all negative. I, I do think that this structure, you know, deserves a lot of discussion and communication. And I hope that in your opening statements, when you said you're really open to other ideas, that you'd even be so bold as to be open to that idea that the city councillor from Lynn was so kind to bring to this meeting tonight. I, I see it as an amazing opportunity. It may be something that you've already considered, and I don't know, I'm not privy to all these discussions, nor should I have been. But I, I just wanted to say that it sounds like a really appealing idea. Lynn is a wonderful community with a commuter rail station that could empty out right at the door of a fantastic structure that could be exciting and welcome in the city of Lynn, with close proximity to the Marine Science Center in Nahant, possibly even a shuttle ride away, and potentially preserve the great relationship we currently have, we want to continue to have, and add something to a neighboring community who would love it. So I appreciate your willingness to be open, and I appreciate all of our town leadership for what they're doing, and thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Christie, 66 Ocean Street. I have a small point to make, and I'll be brief. We used to live in Swampscott on a street called Phillips Beach Ave, very close to what was then Marion Court College. And we were on a, we weren't on the direct path to the college, we were on a loopy street, you know, kind of off to the side. And during times when classes were starting or letting out, the very quiet, remote streets became a speedway. Not just the direct streets, but the streets, people getting lost, people wanting to look at the scenery, you know, very much like Nahant, those streets were completely, were residential and also had a lot of people exercising and children out, and it caused a real safety hazard. East Point might seem like this remote location to you that's not going to affect very many people, but to get there, you affect the entire town, not just Nahant Road, but all of the families, all of the children, everybody in town. Thank you for listening.
Sir? Sir? Oh, John.
Yeah, I'm Shannon Bianchi from 14 Harborview Road. Are you Mr. Tobin?
Yes, sir.
You are? I emailed you in 2015, in April 2015, about setting up a meeting with, I believe it's Ms. McCauley. Does, does she still work with Northeastern?
She does, she does the outreach for the school.
Outreach Facilities Coordinator? Right. We met with Jeff Chelgren, our Town Administrator, which I believe tonight, everybody's thanking him. And in that discussion in April of 2015, we discussed a $50 million renovation to your property. I was subsequently cut off from that email chain, and I was told to deal directly with Mr. Chelgren and not to deal with you guys anymore. I've gone on to do a little bit more research, but I, I've just taken back with all of this, because apparently with Enzo, he says, December 21st, you guys get in touch with him, right? To me, lights went off in my head, and I'm like, why, why, why are you having a meeting with me in 2015 with our Town Administrator? Why are you discussing a $50 million renovation back then? And why, obviously, Jeff, did you know this? Did you know, but why didn't you bring it to the Board of Selectmen's attention three years ago so that we would know what's going on? This is why tonight's such a big deal. Because you didn't talk with you guys, and you guys didn't talk with you, basically, you guys are the only ones talking, and you left the three of them out. And I think that's ridiculous. I may be wrong, but, but I think I'm right.
Okay, well, we don't, we're not, we don't want to be accusatory, we want to, we just want to get through this meeting.
I understand. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that Enzo is right, and everybody else is right, Christine, bless her soul, is right. This has been going on for a lot longer than it has been presented, and thank you.
Justin. Justin, John, you want to answer that? Go ahead. You can answer it.
We never discussed a $50 million project in 2015. We never did.
Okay.
We, we never discussed a $50 million project in 2015. That did not happen.
Okay.
That did not happen.
Okay.
Jeff, do you have, Jeff, do you want to say anything to that?
No, I would agree. I'm sure there were general conversations about possible future development, but there were no details. And so the $50 million, I'm not sure where that figure comes from.
Okay. Hence, open meetings. All right. Mr. Mahoney.
Thank you. My name's Justin Mahoney. I live on 108 Flash Road. I am a fourth-generation Nahant resident proudly, and I'm a second-generation commercial lobster fisherman. Thank you. First, I want to say thank, thank you to Jeff Trussell and Northeastern for coming here, and I want to tell you that I respect you as marine biologist. I just ask that you respect me. I grew up on a lobster boat. I've been doing this since I was seven years old. I know this area, and besides my father being here, I know this area probably better than anyone in this room. And I'm telling you, I have seen the detrimental effects firsthand. I'm not going to, there's a lot of smart people that talk, my brother, unbelievable facts that he gave you. I'm just going to tell you from a lobsterman and a human point, that this, what you've done so far has been detrimental, and I've seen it. When you put what you've done there, when the lops is clear out, the invasive species come in, and we see this in our traps. You are a scientist, but we are also scientists. Every trap that comes up is a science experiment, and we can see this. So we no longer even want to fish around this area, because of what you've done. Now also, I've been involved with the task force, they're great, great people. And the number that you guys are hearing, 30 million, now, we've been told 50 million, and then we also confirmed 80 million. So the 30 million we weren't, you know, and then the other thing, there's been, there's all kinds of different, they, they talk about these kids, the kids at school, that, that's wonderful. But Nahant Education Foundation pays for our children to go to the labs, just so people know this, it's not being given. So, you know, now, everything here circles back to one thing, that's the fact that we're the smallest town in the Commonwealth. It all comes back to that one fact, you know, we can kick this can as many times as we want, but it all comes back to, you know, we're, we're a small town, we all know this. Now, Nahant Road, okay, you can't use Nahant Road, where's the traffic going to go? Going to Willow Road. Well, I can't drive down from Willow Road down to Castle, to Castle down Spring Road, what are you going to do? The cars, you can't get down there in the summer in a regular vehicle. I mean, we've got to be realistic here, people. We've, I've asked you at several meetings if you could, Mr. Caban, he's been great, he came here, he said, come on, we want you to come to Lynn. Can you go talk to them? You could still sit in Lynn, look over at beautiful Nahant. You could send your people over here for if they have to do a dive or what they have to do. I mean, just, just respect us. We're respecting you, but please, we ask that you respect us, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Vi, Vi Paddock, Vi is the new leader of SWIM.
Yes, I'm Vi Paddock, and I live at 172 Willow Road. It was touching to hear Larry Bradley talk about Polly. Polly Bradley created SWIM. Now, SWIM was born at the time when those outflow pipes were planned by Boston Harbor. SWIM was created in 1984, and since that day, SWIM has been so close to Northeastern that I often refer to them as our sister organization or cousin organization. We have a mailbox there. On our Board of Directors, we have a person from the main campus as a liaison with Northeastern University. We have always worked together. And I have to say, it's probably time to talk about relationships. In every relationship, whether it's a friendship, or a marriage, or a partnership, things can go wrong. And usually, in my experience, at my age, I've learned that the answers generally come with communication. And we've heard about this all this evening. So for the last couple of weeks during all this trouble, I and my directors have been communicating with each other on which stance SWIM should take. And we, we decided that one of the simplest steps we could take is a one-year moratorium, which you've all heard about, I think, a complete stop of any, any motion on Northeastern's campus, to give us time to think, to plan, to gather the masses of information that should have been provided to us from the start. There's no information really about what's going on. I was first shocked at the MEPA meeting at the lack of information about the water going in and out of the pipes. So I know it's easy to be angry, it's easy to say, block it, stop it. It's easy, we all get upset about these things. But we're all here together, and I frankly feel that SWIM is part of our town. SWIM is one of us. I mean, not SWIM, I mean Northeastern. Northeastern is part of our town. Northeastern is a resident. And I, as others have said, I think we need to try to keep them. But we can't keep them if we fight, fight them with fire. I think we have to work with all due deliberation. But for us to work with all due deliberations, Northeastern must give us time. They, they really, I believe, owe us a year of quiet deliberation, meetings, considerations, technical information, data, outside experts. Let's get it all together, come together in 2019, and start all over again. Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to cut off after Dan, I'll talk, okay? Because it's getting...
Late.
Late. So, after Dan, that was great, so thank you.
May I?
Yes, absolutely.
Marilyn Goodrich, new resident, 25 Summer Street. My brother brought me here a few years ago. He's lived here many, many years, and he brought me up to East Point. I had never, both my parents were Coast Guard, married in the Coast Guard. I, I never heard about it, really. And I went up there, and I was at Lodge Park, and, okay, so warning here, I'm an artist. So you can tune out if you don't like to hear artists talk. But I looked out at the great ledge off of East Point and the tremendous water hitting it, and I turned to my brother and I said, do you believe in God? And he laughed, he said, I believe in something. And I said, I feel it. And people have touched on that. This is a sacred spot. It really is. And I, and I want to tell you another thing. I think some of the students that you recruit, because I've seen it with my own eyes, that go to your classes or drawn by that awe. A young member of my family stood at 40 Steps Beach and said the exact same thing when my brother brought me to 40 Steps, three times. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. And I said to her, you know, there's a marine biology outfit here. And she said, I'm going to be a marine biologist. Arms like that on a boulder. She's now friends with a noted naturalist, being mentored by that person, Simon Montgomery. You have to understand that the power of this, of this place, you have to understand it. It's not just space. And that's, you know, you don't have, it doesn't have to be all or nothing, from what I'm hearing. You can stay here, have a small footprint, make your bigger, you know, I was at Harvard many, many years, you know, we didn't put everything all in one place, you know, take a little boat up the road, and, you know, have a bigger place somewhere else for your interdisciplinary. But, you know, please understand that. I think so many people in this town have expressed it to me, the specialness, and we, and that's really important to us. Okay, thanks.
Dan.
My name's Dan Purpleitzer. I live at 4 Castle Terrace. I have to admit, it's been really nice to see many people, many new people. I invite you all to the, I'm not any elected official, but I invite you all to the annual town meeting. Please come. You should be part of your town more than just on an emergency basis like tonight. But it's been very interesting listening to people, a lot of new people who I, I don't know, people who are intelligent, thoughtful, caring for their community, caring for a community that's local and also large. But what has impressed me most, listening to everyone tonight, was the deafening silence from Northeastern University. I would say to you, how many of you could be sitting up there under the withering, but thoughtful and sincere criticism and offer nothing, nothing, except one little piece that was offered to Enzo, oh, we got to, we'll, we'll meet, we'll meet? got to... We'll meet, we'll meet." This is what you are up against. A very, very wealthy corporation, nonprofit. You know that because they don't give very much to us. Yes, they do give things to the school, which you've got to pay for. What I would ask you to do, and I think we have to be very careful, have no illusions, listen to what they have told you tonight. They have given you nothing to tell you that they are willing to negotiate. They came to you this evening to present their architectural concepts. We understand that those are not finished drawings. So small, I didn't know what I was looking at. And even though I have glasses, I'm corrected to 2020. It's actually, it's funny, but when you think about it, it's arrogant. Maybe it wasn't intended to be, but you really are totally blind to the people around you. I heard all these wonderful things about Northeastern as a good neighbor. I don't see it. I don't see it by the actions from the Northeastern representatives tonight. And I can't believe that you came here with silence going to be what you were going to offer us. You certainly had to have some idea that there might be some questions. And I think for us as a community, I think you have to be realistic what you're going to be up against. I went to Northeastern also. I graduated in 1970. 1969, we had a student strike. We met in front of the quadrangle, in front of that, you know, it's that kind of Mussolini-style old campus with the... It was built in the late '40s, and that was the style, you know?
The concrete compound.
Yes. Well, there was this wonderful meeting place in front of the main entrance, the quadrangle. Asa Knowles, someone said they had a wonderful conversation with Asa Knowles. I remember Asa Knowles as a very different type of individual. Within a year to two years of that, they made a reform. They eliminated the quadrangle, so the student body couldn't gather again like that. So that was ended. The other thing, I was just talking to a friend of mine who went up to Northeastern, and there's now a security gate that's been moved out, where the beach that had been repaired last summer or the summer before, I thought that was Nahant property. Apparently, it isn't. It's owned by Northeastern. And he was explicitly told, "You stay on the path." Now, this is our neighbor. This is the people... We've been using this town as long as we've lived here. I've lived here since 1950. There are other people here much, much longer, and then there are people who've only been here for a couple of years. I don't know why that... You know, if you're a neighbor, and you're just walking on the road, you're not destroying anything, there's a security guard telling you, "Make sure you keep to the approved path." I agree. There is a right of way. But we're talking about neighborliness. So I would say to you, taxpayers, my fellow taxpayers, I think we might have to pony up some money, because these people, I doubt that you're going to get very far with them. Just listen what they told you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I know I said I was going to cut it off, but I can't refuse Whitey, so... He's probably one of the oldest people in Nahant, so we're going to let him talk.
Tom Walsh, Willow Road. I've been in here, in Nahant, for 100 years, like everyone. Played in the tunnels, liked tea, fished all over. One thing I want to reiterate is what Dan Purpleitzer said. When the fight comes, and the tax rate has to go up, all you people need to come right back here and put your hands up and vote it in, so we have money for legal battles to stop this.
They're going to have to come back, because the Board of Selectmen already voted to put in an article in the April Town wanted, and it was $50,000 put in that article to justify the legal... We expect... This is not going away, okay?
Okay.
And there's a trust factor here, and the trust factor's very low, okay?
Yep.
I do not believe them. After we dealt with them a year ago, I just, the trust, you know, and I was promised something, and I'll be honest with you, I won't bring it up. And, you know, and I've been talking to John and Jeff, and I'll be honest with you, I was just absolutely taken back by this proposal. And I'll be honest with you, I'm shocked. But I should have known it when the people that use Canoe Beach, when they were putting in the pipeline for the gas line. It wasn't no small, you know, six-inch gas main. It was huge. So when that gas line went in, we knew there was something happening. And we've been keeping an eye, and we knew this was coming, but I didn't know it was going to be that quick. The information we received, again, it's like, it's always gray. Nothing in concrete. It's always, "We're going to get back to you on it." In the meantime, they keep pushing, and going to go through. We're going to get ready for the fight of our lives, because we cannot afford the most prettiest, propy, pristine Northeastern. Next, they'll be taking Lodge Park, okay?
Well, how many open places are there? Do you have Bailey's Hill? You have the dump? I'm not going to have a picnic down the dump, or take a walk around here.
No, no. Thank God, we put the Davis Memorial up there. I mean, they can't touch that. We made sure that that's been voted by town meeting, the Davis Memorial. And that was, you know, the marine that died in Vietnam.
One last point. There's a cherished book in the town of Nahant. It's called The Annals of Nahant by Fred Wilson.
Right.
1928. Look on page 305, and you'll see what East Point used to look like before the military bastardized it, and then walked away and left all that crap there. So we want it back to the way it was.
Well...
Or at least, no more expansion. None.
Well...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Whitey. Thank you very much. So does anybody have anything to add? Northeastern, from Northeastern?
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, absolutely.
To Dan Purpleitzer's point, to Dan's point, I don't disagree with a lot of the points that Dan made. And I would agree with his conclusion if things end here. We've heard the objective tonight was to present the plans as they exist today, and again, they're very preliminary in nature, to hear what the concerns and the issues are of the community, of which there have been many, and to give us an opportunity to prepare responses to those and provide those responses to the community. And we need to work through you, gentlemen, to determine what the best form is for doing that. I understand the direction the town's going in. I don't begrudge you. I don't argue against that. But while we move forward, while that's in play, it's still important to the town, it's important to Northeastern University, that we begin and continue to communicate, to address the issues that are being brought before the town, in the event that this project does go forward, so it's a project that we can all live with.
Steve, I'm going to tell you right now, and I'm going to be speaking for myself, not for the other two members. The townspeople in the town of Nahant, they do not want Northeastern to expand that area one iota. They don't want... We, 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 on the Board of Selectmen, are going to take these steps to make sure we cannot afford to expand Northeastern.
Mr. Trussell?
Thanks, Enzo. I would say...
Jeff, I got to say something. Hold on, I'll finish. You know, this is, listen, 230 students, you know, this is about money. Very simple. This is a business they're working up there. And for every student, it's $100,000. It's very simple. It's about money. And if they can get 300 students in there, okay, they don't care, I mean, about us. They don't care about the cars, the trucks. We've got 18-wheelers and huge buses driving over our roadways up there, and our structure for the water and sewer mains and the gas main are not that deep. And I'll tell you, we're having more cracks, more problems, okay? And no one stepped forward to say, "Listen, we've got about a $3 million package on the table for this coming, for the water and sewer to go across the causeway," because we cannot, we've got that new plan. We've got to stay off the lineway, because the governor got caught up in Bell Circle for four hours, and he was very, very angry when we shut down the lineway. So I think we're going to get some state funds, so to speak, maybe. So we're working on that, but I'll be honest with you, we just can't afford the expansion. We can't have 250 students in there. You're talking to, he said 228. That's without staff. And where they're right, I mean, I mean, where they're going to park, well, maybe, we've got an idea. I mean, maybe they're going to take over Bailey's Hill, and they're going to park them inside there, you know? They can have both tunnels. But we seriously, we're going to fight this all the way. The Board is totally committed to this. And we're going to make sure, and with your help, okay, and we're going to keep you abides in the situation. I'm going to make sure it's on the agenda, so we can give you updates. And Enzo's great on the Facebook. I don't do Facebook, and he does. He'll set up the updates to make sure you all know what we're doing and when we're doing it. And if we need you up here for a hearing, you've got to come, because they need permits. And I want to personally, I want to personally thank every one of the organizers that got everyone up here tonight. This is huge. Thank you.
Quickly, I just wanted to thank everyone. I listened very carefully to what everyone had to say tonight. And I would just like to say that, putting this project aside, I would just like to, here at this meeting, to ask the Selectmen to work with the town to identify three, four citizens that would like to work with the Marine Lab on a variety of issues that are of concern to the town. Not just this thing, put this aside, just anything else. I think that would go a long way to helping with communication going forward.
I'll wait for your call. I'll wait for your call. I put it out there, so I'm still waiting. So I'll wait for Northeastern's call. They shouldn't, my phone rings all day, so...
It's been ringing tonight.
Right, I know. It's been ringing tonight. So do I have, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. This meeting is... Thank you, everyone.